We do have a quorum present. Everyone's present except Danny Krigler. We need to take a quick look at the minutes, see if there are any questions or comments or corrections. If not, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
And second, motion moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. We have. Yeah, you're right. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as well, please?
So move for that, too.
Moved and seconded, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Not very much to do here in terms of any applications. There's a preliminary site plan review for an expansion of Plow and Hearth Warehouse. This is just kind of for our information, I think. Ligon, would you carry on with that?
Mr. Chairman, before we get there, and perhaps I guess I would also consider it in the whole. We approved the January eighteen, twenty twenty two.
Yes, we did. I only forgot half of it.
Yeah. Is this? Yeah, okay, I won't add a lot. I put some, that red is my comments. They have two parcels, a thirty-nine acre parcel, eight acre parcel. This is on the thirty-nine acre parcel, so the only thing they really have to do as far as zoning wise is keep a sixty-foot setback from the side, which they do. They, I think there's a, Matt said there is a stormwater retention pile that side that they'll have to that, yeah, where the expansion would go. So they'll have to do a new stormwater plan and submit that, have an engineer design that, but I mean, that, you know, that can be taken care of, so just FYI. And they are moving some parking. It looks like they'll be adding some parking. They, you know, the parking's not really an issue. They've got plenty of parking, but we'll make sure that they're adding enough parking for the code, which the engineer looked at that did this, and so that it meets the code, so we'll do a little review on that. Otherwise, I'm not really sure when they're gonna submit, maybe in a month, so just kind of give everybody a heads up. Looks like they're at a hundred thousand square feet, so things must be going pretty well for them.
Sure. Anyone have a question for him?
Yes. Do they have to go to DEQ?
If it's over an acre, they'll have to submit their stormwater plan to DEQ. That's why, get that approved. And that'll have to be approved before they can start constructing.
What is, what is in the yellow? What are those?
So the yellow is actually what the, that's the new addition.
I know, but I mean, what do the words say?
Oh, yeah. Ninety-nine thousand warehouse addition plus four new employees. I think it says four.
It does. It's ninety-nine thousand square footage, so that's the proposed square footage, and the new employees, as Ligon mentioned, is four.
Any other questions for Ligon? Okay, I assume they've been through all this kind of stuff before. They've got their engineers setbacks and parking and all the permits and stuff. They know what they're doing as far as this is concerned.
Yes, sir.
Any other question for Ligon? Any question from anyone in the audience? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, item B on our discussion items. One of our assignments was to start work on the definition for short-term rental, which is something we are seeing coming up a lot in the future. Peter, would you go ahead and give us some idea about what you have given us for that?
Yeah, this is really Ligon's initiative. And he wrote a paragraph or so in the materials for our joint meeting last time. Steve appointed it to the business committee. We did meet with Ligon. He points out that these short-term rentals, people renting a room in their house, or even their house, or a cabin on their house, are really proliferating in Madison County. It's probably a good thing, assuming there are some controls. And so we discussed with Ligon how we would define a short-term lodging unit and came up with the definition that you see up on the screen, and I think everybody has it separately as well. It addresses several concerns, but let me tell you the broader picture before I get into the definition. Ligon believes that if somebody has a piece of land, there's an extra room or a cabin or something they want to rent out, that if it's only one, if it's only one rental, one room or one cabin, whatever, that that ought to be of right in C1, A1, R1, R2. And we pretty much agreed with that. So although this doesn't make clear how we would do that in the actual sections, like, in the actual articles, like Article 1 for C1 or Article 3 for A1, I should say that Article 3 for C1 and Article 4 for A1, that we would have to have some language or something to indicate this. One is home free, two, you have to have it treated as a special use. The conditions that we worked on with Ligon at a meeting of the committee are those that are spelled out in the first paragraph here and sub-paragraphs 1, 2, and 4. The first is that the unit is offered for rent to third parties for periods not exceeding thirty days. The second is register that the owner of the lodging unit registers with the building office. So we just don't have this proliferating without any knowledge of what's going on in the county. Three, that the result, that the owner remits transient occupancy taxes to the Commissioner of Revenue, and four, adheres to all applicable private covenants and deed restrictions. And then we explain how one of these short-term lodging units would be of right, and more than one on a single parcel would be a special use. And that's pretty much it. Did receive some written comments from Mike, who was not able to attend the meeting, but Steve, you attended the meeting. Do you have thoughts you want to add?
I think this covers what we discussed pretty well, very well, actually. I do know, we were saying, you didn't mention this, that a second short-term lodging unit would not be permitted in R1 and R2, so that's, we're mostly looking at C1 and A1s in zoning districts. I did come across an oddity. We have in our current definitions the term transient guests, which uses a sixty-day maximum. And I'm not sure whether we're gonna have a conflict here, since we're basically talking about transient guests. So we may want to look at that. I like the thirty days myself. That seems more appropriate.
I like the thirty days better than the sixty days.
Other than that, it looks like the definition looks pretty good. And I think you touched on this. If we do this, we'll almost certainly need to put another line in C1 and A1 for by right to mention that it can be done once, and then another one in the special use sections.
Well, the easiest way to do that, Steve, would I, I think, would be to just have a parenthetical C definition articles, twenty dash so-and-so.
We're still gonna need to show it somewhere in in the list of what's by right and what is special use.
You could just say special use, short-term rentals, two or more.
Yeah, yeah.
James, you attended the meeting. You have comments you'd like to share? And Mike, you had some comments.
Yeah, I mean, I was just wondering how far we were supposed to take, what we were, what else we were supposed to include on this? If we were supposed to talk about parking or any of the other issues that I've listed in there?
Ligon, what do you think about that?
I mean, given that we have seventy or whatever, seventy-five in the county. I mean, if it's a single-family home, I don't really think adding too many other I don't know of a situation where parking is an issue, or not too many ordinances, but maybe more urban areas, you might have a parking provision, but parking, you know, on most single parcels, three-acre minimum in A1, you know, so I don't, I don't really see it as something that really really needs to be addressed.
Follow-up on that. Let's, let's make some outrageous assumptions here. Suppose we have a hundred-acre parcel, and somebody decides they're gonna put fifty yurts on it. We might run into a parking and traffic problem in that case. Do we want to think about a maximum here?
Yeah, it would be a special use permit then.
And you could condition
Right.
approval on the provision of parking spaces. So if it's just one, you're not gonna encounter that problem, but if it's more than one short-term lodging unit to special use, county can put whatever conditions.
And the other thing that I was putting writing in there was, did we want to limit at all the amount of people that could stay there overnight? Because we had talked earlier about, you know, having it so that you can have fifty people there because you had a small event or other people coming in, but when it came to, you had a three-bedroom house and you had thirty people staying overnight. Don't know that that would ever happen, but, and that's why I had put in there three people per bedroom. Maybe of the age of ten or something, something of that nature.
I will say this, when it comes to the short-term rentals, and that's all I, you know, all I use when I travel is Airbnb, so the users, the owners are very strict on guests, visitors, number of people.
What about the absent?
What's that?
What about the absentee owners?
Well, I mean, most owners, with my experience, usually don't live far away, or they keep a pretty pretty good check on how many people are there. So, I mean, I've stayed in ones that say not only, only like two people or whatever you, you know, four people. They say no guest can even visit you, you know, and they're, and they will, you know, they'll terminate you right there, tell you to leave, and give you a bad review. So it's kind of after the parking. I guess it's something we could put in there, but I don't think it's really I don't think it's really a big concern.
Well, and the owner can self-police that as well. If owners are, as Ligon says, you're not gonna want to rent a room to thirty people.
Nightmare scenario for most people.
So, but that's, that's an interesting point, Mike, and I think we ought to think a little bit more about that before we finalize any proposal.
I wasn't one, sorry, I wasn't one to start putting a bunch of numbers on something, but what if, you know, the owner lives in Pennsylvania, and he's renting a house out down here or something like that.
Yeah, I think the what ifs are our job, so that's.
Well, that's right. With regard to the what if, we don't have a lot of seasonal crops around here, but you could find yourself as an impound for, you know, migrant workers. There are, there are some occasions where you can have those types of populations and problems to anticipate.
Yeah, Peter?
I got a question. You said there's seventy-five that you know of here in the county. There's probably a hundred that you don't know of. So when we change this ordinance, what's that gonna do to all those people that's been doing it for the last twenty years?
Well, I don't know if there's a lot more than seventy-five because I know. I know Brian, Brian Daniel, he's constantly checking VRBO, Airbnb, there's about Turnkey, HomeAway, just to make sure that, you know.
There's a lot of houses that's got one room rented out in the basement or two rooms rented out in the basement. There's a lot of those around.
Well, I would defer Pete to Sean on this question, but I, I think that in the interest of ensuring the payment of transient occupation taxes, that the imposition of a, of a registration requirement on people who have been doing it to this point would not be illegal or onerous. Sean, what do you think?
I think it's worth considering. You're not gonna catch all of the people who are doing this. I mean, it's gonna be fairly impossible. And then you get those weird situations where you have the raised children who are living with your parents in that in the same room that they occupied, and if they've got two kids in their own rooms, and the kids are getting charged rent by the parents, just because the parents think that's inappropriate, you wind up with lots of issues. And then the question becomes, well, do we enforce against these people and not against these people? We've got to make sure that what we write, you know, is consistent so we don't face any protection.
I would think that most people, if they knew of the requirement to register and pay taxes, would do so, and Gracie, of course, can help us get the word out. And that might well be important.
Yeah, I would think perhaps the, our definition of short-term limiting the number of days would avoid a lot of the children in the basement or children in their old bedroom, yeah.
Fay, you have a question?
I have several things, some of which have been stimulated by the conversation, and some of which I already kind of was gonna ask about. First of all, on the idea of, just like the last meeting that we had, where we talked a lot about the number of people, and I appreciate anybody that has a, has a home close to any land such as the short-term rentals, whatever, that could turn into, say, a large gathering for something. But it's all on the owner. I think we cannot forget, one way or the other, the owner has to be responsible for what goes on in their property. And I think Ligon's right. I don't, haven't stayed in Airbnbs much, but I know people who do all the time, and they're very strict, and they do care, and it's, it's pretty well policed by them. They want to make money. And I don't know, I just don't know that that's gonna be a problem, but maybe it is. I, you know, think about it a bit more. The one thing that I wanted to, oh, and by the way, you mentioned, like, Mr. Greg, you mentioned about the children staying in the house, and that could be considered short. You didn't really mean that, did you? I just. Okay.
There are people who are renting places on a short-term basis that we probably don't want to tax, and that we don't want to know about, but we need to make sure that we write in ordinance.
Yeah. Well, and it does this. Well, yeah, mine are in and out too at times, but I don't know, but that, that would be, I think, something we could, to handle in a different way. And the other thing was, the last time when we talked about the what was the last ordinance we're considering, when we passed about the, for medical, you know, the
Temporary.
Temporary housing. That doesn't fit into this, but we do want it to be, you know, I don't know, I don't think we said anything in there that's contradictory. I do think the thirty days ought to be considered versus sixty in the definition we now have. Now, the last thing, though, the really question I have, what does it mean when you say registers with? What is that gonna entail? What does that? First thing I thought about was, oh, they're gonna start taxing me.
Those, those, those words came from the source, Ligon. And I would think that the registration process would be nothing more than either probably calling up April and she informing you that there's a form that you fill out, that if you're gonna do these short-term rentals, that you fill it out, and a copy of the form goes to the Commissioner of Revenue. That's about the size of it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, before we do that, yeah, it connotes something to me that I'm not sure the word register, no, we're not requiring that they fit any kind of building code or anything at this point. So they don't have to, they don't have to register with building or zoning for a zoning issue or a building code.
No, it's just registering with the county, and Ligon suggested that the county in that instance be the building and zoning office.
But I'm thinking, all these other people that aren't doing that, and you could suddenly put this on me, I'd like to know why. So I think we need a better reason than what.
Here's one of the concerns I got, and I don't have a problem with doing a new ordinance here or whatever, but the big concern that I got, I know where there's some ladies at, the husband's passed away, they're drawing social security, they're renting two or three rooms out to make ends meet so they can buy medicine or do this, do that. They're not telling anybody they're doing it. Nobody knows they're doing it. That little old lady is who I don't want to hurt. She's making ends meet by doing that, and that's the one that I got the concern for. And I know where there are several of those. Legally, no, that's probably not right, Sean. I agree with you.
That's why it's, it becomes an equal protection issue. I was thinking, reading this again, and remember we ran into this with the with the other ordinance for
Temporary housing?
Yeah, all the temporary stuff. You know, where I do the dance hall analogy, but all we're saying in this definition, this definition doesn't really have any teeth. And it's saying you're not really subject to this unless you register. So if I want to be kind of a renegade, I just don't register. And then when you try to collect the taxes from me, I say, well, I don't have to because paragraph two says I have to register, then, you know, it only applies to people who are registered with the building and zoning department.
And I'm thinking.
And I mean, I think we can clean that up.
Well, I think we need to, because I know people that are renting on a permanent basis. It's income, like you said, for them. They have an apartment in their house, their basement, or, and, and y'all don't know about it. I guarantee you, you don't know. You haven't known for twenty years. It's been good.
Yeah, this is not, this is not approved.
Why are we doing it for these?
We're not talking about what I call a long-term rent.
Right, I understand, but we're not doing it for either one. I mean, for that, I just don't know that, I mean, I don't know how much, and unlike, you said, there's no teeth in it. I I don't know, I need to think about this a little bit more.
Yeah, remember, the, the background of this, we keep getting off on the Airbnbs, which may or may not be something that can be regulated successfully. But we're also looking at multiple small individual units that people are building for the specific purpose of short-term rentals. Well, we know that's happening. We've already had two cases that we looked at, and we know more coming down the road.
And I agree with you, Steve. I think there's something that needs to be done about that.
I don't know what, yes.
But I'm not out to hurt that little old lady.
Okay.
Ligon, what other counties do we start?
Yeah, good question. So it's kind of all over the place. Page really doesn't have any, you know, you just pay transit oxygen tax. I don't know about multiple ones. I don't believe Page has any, any sort of regulations other than paying property tax. Warren, if you do a single one, there's a very long permitting process that takes months. Orange, I don't, they make you register. They want you to register with the building and zoning. Bigger, usually the bigger the jurisdiction, the less restrictions you see. Just some jurisdictions just throw their hands up and just say, just pay taxes. We don't, you know, just so many of them. As far as registering, really, they kind of already do that with Brian. You know, he makes them fill a form out, and then they pay the transit oxygen tax. So they're kind of already registered. So I don't know if a, you know, registration, you know, process for the building zoning is totally necessary, but if that's what you want, that's not a problem. And as far as people renting rooms out, again, if they're not using one of those platforms to rent a room, if they're just renting rooms for, you know, to a friend or sharing a house, I mean, that's, that's excluded from this, as far as I'm concerned. So it's really, I think what Mr. Carpenter said, it's kind of going forward for what this is for. We're saying, if you have that single par, and I just sort of came up with this on the fly when I first started. We didn't really have a policy, as far as I could tell, and I guess I, rightfully wrong, I just sort of made one up, and everyone was like, well, that sounds like a great, because people will call, what's your short-term policy? And I say, well, if you have a single, single parcel, we're just gonna kind of consider it by right. If you just have one, we introduce that second one on a single parcel. So it's really going forward like the requests we've seen the last few months. And I know we're gonna see some more. We're gonna see some more that have multiple units. So that's what sort of my thought was to.
Ligon made another point in our meeting, and that is that oftentimes, you're just talking about one of these short-term units on a property, and that if if you require even one to go through a special use permit process, that you're gonna have, you know, hearings stacked up here forever with people coming in and, and seeking special use permit. So, and we agreed with that, and that's why we made the exception on the second paragraph.
Okay. Now, go ahead. You might. Well, I was just gonna say, if they are, how do they know, all right, this is a hypothetical question. Brian tries to collect the occupancy, the transit occupancy tax. How do people know that they're supposed to turn that in?
Well, when he, when he, you know, contacts them, usually, you know, if you get their address, sends them a letter saying.
So, I mean, I'm wondering if messaging to all these people, we talk a lot about messaging, and it seems to be where we break down so badly with public. And somehow let everybody in the, you know, if everybody knows all our potential business, potential Airbnb and RBO, whatever it is, know that they're supposed to come, they're supposed to be paying this tax, and that they have to register with our commissioner, and you can get that information from them. But I do like the idea now. I think where our teeth comes into it is more than one. That's where the teeth would be, that they do need to come in. than one. That's where the teeth would be, that they do need to come in. And I'm all for that, special use. It's just the registering thing. I think if they're already doing it through Brian, why did they do it again? I mean, that was my.
Say something, please.
Okay, so I don't know whether it's going to muddy the waters, but the IRS rules are that you can rent your house for 14 days without reporting it to the IRS. It doesn't matter how much you charge for those 14 days, but it's only 14 days in a year. So maybe with occupancy tax, that can also be, like, it's a grace period of 14 days.
I think that's backwards, Francois. I think if you have a rental house, you can use it yourself for 14 days.
No, 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 no. I've just checked. I've just checked the IRS. Because they were, for long story, when Hope visited Philadelphia, there were people interested in doing it. But no, you can rent your own house. And yes, you're right, but that's a different rule. So anyway.
Mr. Chairman, just one comment, I think. Maybe getting rid of sub-paragraph two, three, and four, but with some of them, you don't become, you don't, you're not penalized for following the rules. You know, we certainly don't want to do that. But I think that we probably do not include the enforcement provisions in the definition. And I think we just have a different section that says, like, you know, the term lodging units, you know, and whatever the provisions are. We put that in the guts of the ordinance rather than in the definitions. You recall with the temporary use issue, that was something that worked when he brought it up. He said, you know, this really isn't enforceable because it's a definition. It's not.
That's right. It's got to be an ordinance.
Well, the, the sections like C, like Article three, Article four, et cetera, they would list a short-term lodging unit as a, as a by right use and, and a special permit use. And there's got to be somewhere, and it might well be at that point, that you explain what we explained in the second paragraph of, of this draft. Let us talk about that. And before we move this further, we'll be in touch with you about it.
Yeah, I, I agree on that. I think we, we need something more like what we did with the event venue, where we have the definition, we have it mentioned as an SUP, and then we have a section that deals with the actual nuts and bolts of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, it sounded, I'm having a hard time following and writing, but I'm going to get the hang of it. Like, maybe we were thinking it doesn't need to be registered with building and zoning as long as the taxes are paid or something like that. I mean, it definitely needs to be. Anyway, my thought is it definitely, the building inspector needs to take a look at it. Somebody's going to put a chicken coop on there for $30 a night and have somebody staying in it. Like, the building and zoning needs to know what building it is, and they need to take a look at it.
What's the difference between that and some of the clamping and camping?
Maybe.
They pay on their tents, their tents, too.
Safety. I mean, safety, fire, you know, like.
We just had one that we reviewed where, like, fire retardant type of material that goes over these clamping tents. So the building would definitely do it.
But I, okay, bring it back to what Nathan just said, if I could speak. But I asked the registration, does that mean, I ask when I ask the question about the registration, does that mean it is going to get inspected and that we're going to check all these? That's what I asked, and you said no.
If, if it's new, they have to come.
Well, if they need a building permit, yes, that needs to be spelled, or a building or something.
And that, that's why Bill, uh, planning and zoning is where they're going.
Right, but that's not part of the registration necessarily.
That's where they would register.
That doesn't make sense.
For new, we see, we're not talking about.
Then we need to be able to spell it out while they're registering. What can you expect if you come in to register? I don't know. Right now, I'm cloudy. I don't have one, but if I did.
Among other things, it gives them an advantage because they are on the county's website or can be placed on the county's website as this is available in Madison.
No, we don't do that.
They don't? Well, you've got.
Be straight about it.
What does Tracy Gardner do?
That is the whole thing here. This, the, the registering, one for the safety component, but mostly, I hate to say it so bluntly, it's for the money.
Yeah.
Um, I don't understand why we have to have them registered with building and zoning and why building and zoning shouldn't just go to the registrar that's already got a registry for these. Why make it, why make them register twice on this?
Right.
It's our responsibility to work for them. I mean, good Lord.
So normally, if I, if I may interject, Ligon, if someone comes in and approves, like, track rates, when you just heard of, someone gets approved, that notification goes over to the commissioner's office, who then sends out a form of whatever they need to do as part of an Airbnb. So there's a, I'll say there's a process or a informal process, whatever you want to call it, that currently exists based upon your special use or your approvals on these cases. So that is occurring. I don't know if that's the same as this registry that you talked about. That's how someone would get registered through Brian Daniel. And once you're on the radar, if you will, that form goes out, that's, that's expected every year.
Okay, going back to the building. When, I under, I'm confused. As you mentioned, being inspected, when does a building inspector go to these places?
So I would say if it's a, it's a house. So whether you rent that house for a day to a family or your family lives in it for.
Or a room.
Years.
Or your basement.
You know, then that's, that meets the building code. There's nothing, and I could verify this with Jamie, I think we've had this conversation, there's nothing about a short-term rental that is different from the regular building code, you know.
So when, but I'm not talking about a house. I'm talking about an extra accessory building of some sort, a cabin.
Well, if you're going to, if, if, if you're going to rent, you know, if you have a cabin on your property and you're renting it, the first thing we're going to ask is you get a building permit to build that, you know, regardless whether you rent it for a day or a year.
Yeah, but it might have been there a long time.
You know, whether you're renting it. If, if anyone's staying in that building, they're going to have to meet the building official, you know, the building code.
So people know that.
We remind people of that all the time.
Not all of the Airbnbs, though, or any of these things we're talking about.
That goes with any property anywhere, you know.
I mean, I'm just thinking about ones that I know about. I'm just wondering, we just need to be specific. That's all, just be specific. People up front, we need to have transparency. And just need to know what, what's expected of them.
Okay.
We don't even know, I think, they're in bad shape.
Yeah, we keep going back to the Airbnbs. Maybe we should just exempt them and work on what we were supposed to be working on.
There's 46 Airbnbs.
Yeah.
I mean, we say the term, it's like saying a Xerox for a copy.
Yeah.
You know, it's, we say that, that's the most common, but it, it's a short-term rent.
It is a short-term, and that other website, too, that our.
The RBO.
The RBO.
Yeah, Pete.
Stephen, and excluding BnBs, RBOs, BOs. Ligon, I thought I read sometime, and maybe I'm wrong, I couldn't read, but I just want to ask the question that when the health department team comes out and gives you a permit for your property, they've got so many bedrooms and there's so many people to the house or whatever. Now you're renting it and you're adding a lot more people to the house. I thought I read somewhere when you did that, you had to go to the health department and they had to approve the extra people to your system or whatever. Is that true or not?
If you add to, if you take a, a building and add bedrooms, and if you're on.
I'm not saying add on anything. I'm just talking about add more people.
Right.
Because your system is designed for so much.
Right. I don't think the, the health department looks at people. They look at bedrooms. So it, it's really based on, I think it's like 150, 150 gallons per bedroom a day. So if you've got two bedrooms, you get 300 gallon tank. I think it's something like that. So it really does. They don't really break it down. I, I guess the, the thought is, is that if you've got two bedrooms, you could probably only get so many people in the, in the dwelling. So.
Mike, you?
Yeah. I, I'm just sort of curious. What's, what is the county's lodging tax? What's that percentage?
It's 5%. But you also have to pay the state sales tax, which is 5% too. So it's, ends up being, you know, with your state sales tax and local lodging, it's, it's 10%.
So is that how the state gets their registrars from, where they register from county? Or they're doing something different with the state?
Yeah, so state, I guess your state income taxes, you have to fill something out with the commissioner for the state for taxes as well that you submit. But transit occupancy tax is its own category that they collect taxes. The state levy is a different, that you pay to this. I think you do pay it to the commissioner of revenue and all this stuff. And the commissioner keeps a percent, I believe, and sends the rest to the state. Well, that's, that's sales, you know. But you're still going to have that 5% state.
5%.
Right. I think that.
If they registered and they said, okay, now that we're registered and we're saying now that we have to pay a tax to the county, it's going to be 5%.
And of course, it's just a, you know, you charge $100 a room, you collect $110, you know, like when you go to hotels.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. I think we've got lots of food for thought and we'll get this back in the committee and work on it some more.
I'm just going to make one more comment. To me, it seems, you know, we've got the existing stuff, which I don't even really see, like, let that, let Brian or somebody else deal with all that. And then you've got the new applications. And I think we just need a smooth, concise kind of application process of how that goes. If the building already had a permit and it's been inspected, doesn't need to be looked at. If it's an unpermitted structure or something like that, could be looked at. If it's, you know, and they just go through the list and they got their little checklist of stuff to do if they want to start anywhere.
Yeah, I mean, can't very well be retroactive anyway. You're right, yeah. Okay, any other quick comments? Excellent. Okay. Good start. Okay, I guess, Fay, that brings you up.
Yes, the hot topic. Yes, committee met, minus Francois's, it wasn't her fault. It was mine, apparently. So Francois's, I tried to explain things to her. The committee does agree that we need to look at this ordinance. It was established in 1974, when everybody owned their own farms, two, 300 acres, and everything was just fine and dandy and no subdivisions. And they were young, with no children and all that. Well, and we're not talking about the subdivisions of the big ones. We're talking about the four drives, four drives on one private drive is what we're looking at. So things have changed a lot over the years in everything. And so we know that it need, we, we agree that it needs to be updated, changed, replaced, and/or whatever we're going to do, replaced with something with this 48-year history. And the way we're seeing it on so much of our, our applications coming in with our subdivisions, always this driveway problem. And a lot of it, we're not taking into account a whole lot of things. When I asked Betty several years ago, but former zoning person, what was one of the biggest things she saw complaints in the county? That was it. That ruling, that how, and a, and a young man today told me with his 200-year-old farm that they've had in their farm since they came here to Madison, how his brother was deprived of his, of land his father was going to give him, and it all had to do with that private drive at the time. And the fact that they couldn't put any, he couldn't give it to him. So that was, and that's happened a few years ago. I hear that all the time, different things. So I think it's time to look at it now because, as Pete points out, if I'm going to use Pete's comments, we all know, they all know how to do it. They need, know how to get around it, boundary adjustments with this, with that, whatever. They know how to get around it. So we see it throughout the county. We've been seeing it. And I think we need to look at it again and not, our new ones coming up, they know how to, the new people purchaser of land, they know where to purchase it. They tell the farmer where they want it so that, that they can push, purchase it on a state road if it goes through, not have to worry about this so much. But that doesn't do a lot of our residents who really need this looking at. And also, we're not taking into account, for instance, the length of the driveway. A lot more dry houses on, you know, we still have the three-acre requirement that are limited some, but we need to look at it. So with the lots of options, a lot of counties that I've looked at have five houses on a driveway or don't even address it. They address it in a different way. I don't know what we're going to come up with yet. We talked a lot about all the different ways that we could look at it. The other thing that we are bringing into this is the family division in how that affects that. That whole drive thing, when in three years in our county, ours is a little bit shorter than some of them, if you do a family division and you only get to do one, where you give a gift of one, you know, per child, per family member, you, per family member, I should say, not necessarily a child. In three years, then what happens? They can do whatever they want. So does the same rule apply or not? It's not really written. We need, we need to figure out how that's going to go. Because you don't have a house sitting there and all of a sudden they go sell it in four years because they get a different job. And now you've got a house, so what do you do with it? What do you do with it? Are they able to sell it? Now that makes five houses on that driveway or six or whatever, but it started out totally legal. So we need to talk about that and think about that. And the one thing that we will definitely, and this is, I'm going to meet with Mr. Gregg as soon as we can work that out, a very tight, well-written, legal requirement on road maintenance agreement. Has to be. I don't see how we can get around it. That would solve a lot of our concerns about safety. Now, if we're going to talk about density, don't even get me started. So are we talking about density with this rule? Or are we talking about safety and, and other issues with this four-in-one rule? So I asked the county that, I mean, I asked all of us at a meeting back in the summer. That was my elephant in the room and it didn't get discussed and hadn't been. So may not need to be. Bottom line is, if we can do something to make this work, be safe, we will have a number. Can't just leave it open. Well, of course, the subdivision, you know, if you're going to put 15 houses in there, then you've got a subdivision. Different rules. Right? So if you all have any ideas or whatever, you let us know, let a committee member know, and we're going to meet again soon. And after I talk with Mr. Gregg and figure out legally what can we, can be enforced, perhaps our four-in-one, if somebody ever decided they were going to sue us over that right now, which it did get lost in, what county was this, Loudoun County? They lost. I mean, it's not enforceable, probably. Somebody wants to sue. So, you know, I think we need to look at it. I think it's time to look at it.
Four-in-one or four-in-ten?
No, 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 the four drives, four drives on one.
Four parcels, four parcels on one.
That's all we're talking about, not the four, not the four-in-ten.
We're not playing with four-in-ten, though.
Yeah.
We're not doing that now. No. No.
Yeah, if I may, one, one of the things that I've observed in a relatively short time is this is creating an unintended consequence, I think. What we're getting is, in order to avoid this, we're getting three-acre parcels lined up on every road, or maybe too deep or something like that. And we're getting landlocked parcels, which are inaccessible now, which is one of the things you were talking about. And I, I suspect that was not the original intent to develop every road through the county so that you don't have open space along the roads, which is what's happening.
Right. And a lot of our home place, like our farmers now, the ones that, you know, had 50 years ago when this was, I'm sure the intent was good at the time. I'm not going to question that. But the farmers that might be wanting to sell, and all the large parcels of land, maybe the home place with the private drive, going back to the home place, is set in the middle of the, of the farm. That's where you put it. Look at the houses. They're not put on the edge. They're set in the middle of the farm frequently. And so there's all this land along the way. But what are people doing? They're buying it along the driveway. We see it all the time. We see it every time we have a subject. They know how to do this. They do boundary adjustments. They do all kinds of things. And I think we need to just fix it so that it's not hurting anybody. And we need to look at it. But the road maintenance agreement is this big, 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 huge component of this. We've got to figure it out legally, decide that we either want to write one, that we have everybody sign, it's going to be enforceable and fair, or how do we do this? Some people do different. Some people do different things. So I've got two or three of those and I've got a couple of things. Green County spells it out pretty well. I think we just, we just need to look at it. So Mr. Greg, he'll be, look at that with us if you don't mind. But anyway, if you have, any of the committee members have any add to it, please?
You talked about the family divisions, you know, what are you going to do after three years and you can sell the family divisions? Well, if you're going to build a house, and I don't know if this is legal or not, Sean, but if you're going to build a house in there, you sign on to the maintenance agreement. And if you decide in three years you're going to sell it, you have to sign on to that maintenance agreement in order to buy that house. So it's a way for that house to still have to be part of the maintenance agreement. And you can't leave that house out if it's going to be your family division.
Typically, the way you do that is the owner of the property, it's better to do it before there are any settlements.
Exactly.
Right.
So you do it as a, it's called a declaration as opposed to a road maintenance agreement. And it's a covenant that runs with the land so that anybody who purchases the property is subject to determine the conditions of that road. And that's, that's the way most subdivisions are set up now. You'll see the declaration of the Red Hill Road subdivision or whatever, and it will have that and that covenant runs with the land so that if you buy it, you're necessarily buying into the road.
Right.
The other thing you'd have to be concerned of there somewhat is, let's say that you bought, we changed it and it's six lots that you could put on a private road. And all the lots are big enough to where they could let their kids build a house too. So you've got to take a look at if you're going to, you're going to buy that or you're going to let everybody do a family division off of that, adding that many more to, to the, to the private road. So I, I think you got to take a look at what could happen if a family division, if you had six on there and everybody built another house, now you've got 12 or 14, so.
And amplifying that issue, there is a subdivision in Orange County that, you know, the, actually the developer on the road had paid the taxes on it. So it actually went up for a tax sale for a hot minute until the county attorney had done, figured out that it was going to be sued. The, because I mean, a road that everybody can use really doesn't have any value. But then what happens is you have this gap because nobody's responsible for maintenance. And that's where the nightmare comes in. If you're ever, find yourself in Green County, go to Dogwood Village, Dogwood Valley subdivision, you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. And it's, there's been a disagreement among the landowners up there forever. The upshot, which is it's a public safety hazard. And we need to make sure that whatever is done takes care of that. And one of the other issues with regard to the, like Daniel's subdivision, or again, those particular part of tracks, as you mentioned, you wind up with a development, but it winds up being a development without any building standards. Does it make sense to impose upon these people a certain standard for what the road is look, looks like? One reason four houses make sense is because four houses, you don't get that much traffic and the owners probably know each other, particularly if they're family members. But if you wind up with 10 to 15 or 30 people, you're going to have one kid with a go-kart and he's going to tear up the road. And the other neighbors are going to be mad about it and they're going to show up in the county offices and ask the county to fix this problem. And we have very few tools to fix that problem. So those are the issues. That's one of the reasons that it's kind of one of those unintended consequences. I doubt that when they put this together, the four in one rule, that they consider that possibility. But, you know, again, I go back to the fact, the fewer houses there are using the road, the less of an interest the county has in maintaining those standards for new roads. Five maybe is not a big deal, but if it's 10 to 15, then suddenly it is a county.
We're not talking, we hope we won't. But interestingly, you would mention Green County because in their ordinances, 6.4.4.5 addresses the road maintenance agreement for existing private roads. Do they address it? So, you know, that's in Green County. Now, they're not enforcing it, maybe that's grandfathered in or whatever, because this was made in 2019.
Well, one of the things that we were thinking about here, Sean, and that I would consider is, I don't want to ride down a road and see a driveway coming out everywhere. To me, that's a safety issue. And I think it's more important to be able to put more houses and bring them out on one driveway than just have driveways, all of them down the road everywhere. And then you get that piece of land like Steve's talking about back here behind you that not necessarily landlocked, but really hard to do something with.
And, and that's, that's the whole, and Legan can speak to this better. Took a couple of classes and this is why planned unit developments make a lot of sense. And that's why the National Department of Urban Development is pressed for those because then you get development by one large landowner. All of the infrastructure is built and all of the rules are set by the people who live there, which is different from, you know, just popping, you know, building laws off of Route 231. And this is, this has been an evolving area of law since 1945. And Madison's probably a little behind the curve on it because we haven't had the growth that Fairfax County is having.
Well, and we've learned how to play the game. I would, I would just, we're going to try to use common sense, fairness, transparency, and try to fix some things so that we, that it's enforceable, that we can keep from harming our citizens who own land that need to be, that they need to sell versus we just cannot stay at our 300 acre farms anymore. And if that's, if we're not, if that's not a reality, right up and down 230, 231, and in all the other backroads. They're happening, but they've learned how to figure, they figured out how to do it. And they're lucky, but some of them aren't so lucky. So I just want to fix it, that's all.
Okay, any other, yes, Mike?
So what's, what's been the position of the BZA on this? The advocate comes in and he would definitely probably be the fifth guy. Has the BZA been approving those or been, how they've been pushed?
He's open them, I don't think, can't legally.
No, I mean.
It's not a zoning.
Yeah, it's not really an appeal. It's sort of like that cell thing we had a while ago. It's not really, it's not really an appeal just because, you know, you can't put a lot there. It's not really a hardship, so they wouldn't approve it. I would just say, all this is kind of wrapped up right now, the fact that there's a lot of demand for parcels and for land, more so, I'd say, at any given time in the history of Madison County or anywhere really. So it's a little bit of pressure. My thought of the four in one, that, you know, four in one's fine rule. I mean, it's, it's, other counties have similar things. My sort of, you know, maybe issue with it was, you know, what Mr. Coats had, you know, we were showing from a topography point of view. It seems like Madison, in the years, have said, we're, we're, we'll work around it. But again, the workaround, like Pete said, is putting another driveway where it doesn't really, you know, I was kind of looking at it more from not really saying you have to get rid of the four in one, but saying if there's a situation with Mr. Coats where he has two parcels side by side, side by side, which is a little unusual that someone's developing two side by side like that. But in this case, the topography and the way you grade it out, it just makes more sense for one of those to serve five as opposed to, you know, just kind of making these arbitrary movements and cutting a lot. So that was sort of my thought. But the, the other thing as far as family subdivision, now Betty, if you look at our subdivision ordinance, it says that families are exempt. They're not considered subdivision. So I think it's pretty routine to approve a family subdivision if it was a fifth lot on a private drive, as long as it was family.
But if they can sell it in three years.
Right. So my thought is, a family subdivision usually is done to give you some benefit. There's something that you, you're kind of, you, you don't have to follow the same sort of rules if it's family. So I don't have an issue, and I think it's a fine rule to say, if you are the fifth lot and you're a family, you can do that. You know, might want to put things, they have to have a maintenance agreement and things like that are, are fine, but you might want to also say you have to hold that lot for 10 years. You know, or five years. You might want to opt for three. You know, this is a family subdivision, it's divided off to your daughter, you know. Right now, there, other than the fact that you could create more than four lots in a 10-year period through family subdivisions, as long as they're all on that, at that four in one rule, there's really no other advantage to a family subdivision. I mean, you don't, you don't, you don't get any other. I read the ordinance and I don't, I didn't see, at least from the get-go, that it was clear that family subdivisions were, were exempt from the four in one. So if, if we want to clear that up and say you're exempt, then let's, I would say, do that. But if there are more than five or six parcels on a private drive with a, a maintenance agreement, I, I think that's acceptable. Other communities, I'm sure, allow that, but you kind of be, sort of be careful. I know we have this thing called Leather's Lane. And with private drives, what will happen if it's not maintained? It's only as good as the people that are in the agreement, you know. And often, sometimes it goes neglected and you've got five or six houses on it. And then the next process is like, hey, I think you can get this put into the BDOT system. You know, it will, you know, so you kind of want to be careful that you don't have, you know, you're really curating neighborhoods necessarily with private drives, I think you can. But, but there are a lot of examples in Madison of, of neighborhoods that, you know, Oak Park and, why am I blanking on east, just east of here? You know, they're.
Malvern.
Malvern, yeah. So, you know, that private, you know, it's, it's, it's only, like I said, it's only good as to people who are involved in, in the agreement. So.
Well, that's why the agreement, and we, we haven't addressed yet, you know, about the existing houses already on the drive as far as it, well, there'll only be three of them, owner and probably three others. But the, the new ones would be the ones that would have to have this maintenance agreement if we put it into an ordinance kind of thing, that a maintenance agreement, an enforceable, good, tight maintenance agreement is written, which is possible. And I have examples and other people and lawyers are very good at drawing themselves up and they know what to say. But they have to do it. I mean, there's no choice about it. And we should, I think if we start, again, messaging this to, to owners and to people who are doing this, it just becomes part of the deal. It's part of what you do. And I, I wouldn't consider it any other way. And it's registered at the courthouse and it goes with the land and so.
Well, I got a question there, Sean. Let's say, Sean, that we change this to where, and I'm just hypothetically saying this, that we change this to where you could have seven houses on the drive, on a piece of property on that one drive. Four of them is already built. Now we build three new ones behind here. Can we make those people that's already there do anything to help protect these people back here, far as the road's concerned?
In terms of.
In terms of signing on.
Southern counties?
Yeah.
So they've got building lots?
So if they create three more building lots and, and these people already live here.
Right.
Don't have any agreement or nothing. We, the three new building lots has an agreement, but the people that are here, somebody signed and that, I've already been here.
I can tell you, other counties have, in front of that issue, with the first come, first served, there's not really a good answer. You know, I mean, there just isn't. You know, I've run into a development property for myself. I don't know what other locales are doing, but again, it's not what the trend is. And the trend is to regard these private divisions as developments. Where you've got a lot more and that means that planning is, that means a lot more extensively involved. What we're really talking about is the least regulated aspect of them. And that's these residential housing, relatively small, you know, just low end, relatively low in tax subsidy. But, but your point's well taken. You know, we can try to find some land, which, of course, if you put a cap on it, you know, let's say no more than seven houses on this road, then you were going to hear people saying, well, it's a hardship to me because I'm going to landlocked. Of course, they're not landlocked, you can't build a house back. They can still use the land for, in a number of positions. You know, the presumption seems to be that all land is used for housing. That's simply not true.
No, but what we're talking about, but Green County has the one from existing. I just referenced it, so six point, whatever it is. Don't know if they've been sued or not about it, but it's there.
Okay, Peter?
I've got one very short comment, which we haven't addressed in this discussion. And that, that is that I know that Legan favors on this issue what he calls a common sense exception. I haven't heard that discussed tonight. I would be very much opposed to that, but I would suggest that as your committee, Faye, moves forward, that you include Legan in the discussions.
Well, we have already.
You have, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Great. That's all I have.
Just for purposes of clarification for the media, I don't think Peter Ward meant to say that it's against common sense.
No, I mentioned common sense in my, we hope what we do is going to be a great thing.
You have to be careful about how you define common sense.
I think the media left it.
Media left it.
I mean, and, you know, basically where the discussion went was, and Pete, Pete brought it to attention, and Mr. Coats' property is a perfect case study for that. Would we rather have three driveways coming out to serve eight houses or eight? Eight? Would we rather have three driveways coming out or two onto a state road? And when you're talking about planned development, which is really what we need to start thinking about, that's the question. If you have a good road maintenance agreement in place, assuming that that is there, would you rather have three driveways or two? And, you know, and how that's going to compound over the years.
Yeah, it sounds like, Faye, maybe, I think you were already aiming that direction, the road maintenance agreement. Maybe giving the board supervisors some options to, I don't know if they can require that, but put it in, in it somehow so that if there, if the board supervisors agrees that there is a valid enforceable road maintenance agreement in place, that they could make an exception to the four and, and the common sense rule there. But I would rather have them responsible for the common sense.
My vote is always to make it go to the board.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's, that sounds like a valid direction to start looking, I think. Benny, you know the comment on that?
I'll just add to that. Or would you rather have one driveway coming out on the state road?
Well, I think what you're seeing more so in Madison now than in the past, the people that are coming here or wanting to buy land here is not looking for that three acres. They're looking for that 10 acres and the 12 acres and the 30 acres. So when you take a big farm and you start dividing that up and then put four or five houses there on one road, that's a big difference because it, it didn't seem like that the real estate now, they're looking for three acres. It's not what they're wanting.
But they might in the future, when they decide to make that 10 acres into three parcels.
Well, that's the point.
Yeah.
That's the point, for sure.
All right, any other comment? You've got your work cut out for you, Faye. Yeah. It'll be a busy group, yeah. Okay, any other quick comment on that?
All right, Legan, I think you had just a very brief mention about. I'll, I'll just say on a, on a comp plan, if I look at the data, it says you kind of have the state codes, that you have to review it. We talked about the term the other day, every five years. So it was adopted in 18, so it looks like to me 23 could be when we start potentially looking into, you know, sort of revising the comp plan. So my thought was maybe at the end of this year, you know, part of the comp plan is sort of the, you look at, you know, where your growth is, snapshot of, you know, how many people live in the county. You can put things like, I think the last one did a very good job of, of sort of going over the demographics and different trends. You can look at building permits. There's a lot of different information we can kind of show, growth, where we've been, where we're going, where we think we might be going. And then really the, the biggest component, and it doesn't really have to be real complicated, is looking at potential growth areas. Obviously did it in the last comp plan. My, my basic idea is to, is to sort of work with the planning commission, you know, if you don't, and I'm thinking end of this year, starting in 23, which would put us ahead of time, you know, well ahead of time, you know, that, you know, I think as Sean says, there's not a comprehensive plan. I think as Sean says, there's not a comprehensive plan, uh, police department, the state's going to come, and i- if we don't have it adopted in twenty-three or twenty-four, um, uh, but at the end of the year, maybe start working on some of the sections, uh, if we want to do a small subcommittee, I have a few people that would, you know, work with me, or to kind of put some of those, uh, parts of the comprehensive plan together, then. We did this in Loray, uh, I, I sort of, at some point, maybe in twenty-three, if we want to go ahead and move forward in twenty-three, is, you know, I like to sort of have, uh, a few work sessions with the public at the fire hall, show maps, show things like growth areas, look at things like ADUs, have people go through with a clipboard, look at pictures, what do you like, what do you don't like, what would you like to see, what are your thoughts on, on tourism, and we kind of do a plan, uh, that the people can come and interact and, and sort of leave, and you know, leave us with something that we can analyze. I always say, when it comes to planning, if you show people what kind of good planning looks like, they often like that. They often will choose, uh, what I, at least what I consider, you know, I talked to Cardy a little bit about, you know, maybe we look at some of the smaller villages, uh, and see maybe how they could potentially sort of become little, little growth areas, and kind of goes back to this whole idea of, um, you know, we have a, a little bit different ballgame as far as demand for property, and it's a premium, uh, it could be a good opportunity here in twenty twenty, uh, sorry, twenty twenty-two and beyond, to put together a plan that, um, uh, really be a lot different than before. Uh, you know, we did plans in many of these areas, there just wasn't as much demand, uh, for housing, not just for people from other places, but people who live here and grew up here, I think that could be addressed. Uh, so, uh, my sort of idea is to just kind of do it in-house with a little bit of, uh, maybe outside work done for graphics and processing and things like that, and printing, but otherwise, I think we can put together something, uh, I, I can bring you what I did for Loray back in thirteen, I believe it was, just kind of give you an idea of what the product, product would look like, it'd be similar to what we have. Uh, so just putting it on people's radar, um, for, for, for right now, so.
Ligon, I will say, and I don't think there are a lot of people here who's worked on the comp plan yet, it takes a lot of time, you ain't starting too early. The time you do all the researches, there's the meetings and the public, it, it takes a lot of time to put the comp plan together, it's, it's not overnight.
It's actually one of my more favorite things to do in planning. I've done several, and, uh, I, I think the community engagement is probably some of the, the most fun part, is to kind of get out and, and let people, uh, give, you know, let me have options to think about things, and like I say, often when you do, you, you find that people, you know, usually have some pretty good ideas about, you know, how maybe the county could change or evolve, uh, in the future.
Yeah, Peter, you have?
Yeah, I'm glad to hear, uh, Ligon, uh, that you'll be deeply involved in leading this effort. I was deeply involved in the last one. Uh, there are really two parts to, as you know, to the comprehensive plan, the first part is really done by an outside group, i.e. Rapidan Planning Commission. They supply all of that factual data, they do the printing, they do the graphs, uh, they're very, very helpful. The hard part, albeit the shorter part of the plan, at least last time's plan, was the goals and the, and the strategies for achieving those goals. We did have a public meeting, uh, that didn't seem to be a very efficient way to, uh, get public input, but we had a great many, um, two-on-one or one-on-one interviews, um, that were sort of guided, that you would be the guide. And I think Pete's right, that to do that right and to really touch every part of the county and the community, um, there are a lot of, there are a lot of interviews to be done. And, um, uh, uh, I, I think that, that part of it really should get started now. That could easily take a better part of a year to do all of the interviews that you would want to do to really get an understanding of where people are coming from in this county, at all levels, at all walks of life, all occupations. And, and that's a very important project. Uh, one, one thing that we found last time that was very helpful was to have sort of a rough outline of questions to ask. So, uh, that you had some framework for the interviews. Um, but I found interviewing people, I was fairly new to the county at the time, I found interviewing people very interesting and a great education on the county and, uh, how people, look at the county now and where they'd like to see it go. So it's a fun project, but, uh, but I, I agree with Pete that it's a long, involved project. That's all I have.
Yeah, it sounds, Ligon, like maybe we want to start a little before the end of the year.
Yeah.
Which I suspect is the case, yeah.
Yeah, maybe by the summer, we can start kind of putting together a solid timeline even before the summer and.
Get, get some working committees formed and, and get started on it. Yeah, I think that's safer than leaving it too late.
Look at Ligon, that's the face of fun.
He knows it's going to be wonderful.
Uh, speaking from my end of the county, you can go to the little country store in Etlin and interview six people at a time, you can go over to Syria and sit at that store and interview six people at a time, and they will tell you what they think, yeah. It's great stuff.
They hold back.
Yeah, they hold back.
Yeah, I, I think Peter's got a point too, maybe a little bit more formalized structure than having your ear bent by six people in Syria. That might be helpful, yeah. All right.
Y'all did, I mean, the planning commission did just an exceptional job the last time, and it's been brought up multiple times, and it doesn't need to be this, this complete overhaul, but I do think it's just a real good exercise that kind of shows what Madison County is and the direction that we're going. Y'all captured it pretty, pretty well the last shot.
Well, it makes the people feel like they're part of it.
Yeah, which they should be, yeah.
Well, they should be.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, can I please have a motion to adjourn? So both moved, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, thank you.
Who made the motion?
Who made the motion, Peter, did you make it?
Yeah.
Went too fast for you that time.
I was, everybody was leaning forward like this, thank God you love the comp plan too. It's your document.